All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular DeKalb City Council meeting of November 27th to order. Roll call, please.
Zasada.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
A President.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Captain Hyvee, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Zasada, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zasada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
A.D.
The agenda has been approved. Agenda Item D, Presentations, we have none. And Agenda Item E, Public Participation. Tim Lynch, would you like to come up to the podium?
Hi there. Thank you. I've actually kinda just met half of the room, so, but I wanted to, my name is Tim Lynch. I am new to Oakcrest. I'm the new CEO over there. And I wanted to take a moment, A, come over and introduce myself, and B, get the opportunity to meet some of you all and hear about what's happening in city government, and how, and where Oakcrest might be available to support, you know, some of the initiatives in the town. And certainly anything to do with senior care is our bailiwick, and it doesn't necessarily imply that you have to live there. So I would love to hear, you know, what's going on in the community and learn where Oakcrest might have an opportunity to weigh in, or more importantly, to participate. And that's my only agenda item in being here. It's great to meet you all.
Awesome. Appreciate it, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you.
Whole bunch. And welcome to the community.
Thank you very much.
And also, you have no reason to stay. You're always welcome to leave once your agenda item is free or we're through it. That applies to everyone in the audience. No problem whatsoever. We don't take offense. All right, moving on to another public participation, we have Mark Charvat. And as a reminder, you have three minutes, sir.
I was looking at the City of DeKalb website and discovered on the City of DeKalb website that there is an item on the website regarding the First Street and Lucinda Avenue construction update. And it says mid-November. Now, didn't we just pass Thanksgiving? And Thanksgiving is not mid-November. And I thought maybe we were gonna hang some turkeys and maybe have the city staff put some Christmas lights on there. But if we can get an update, I know there was an audio update that was issued or at the last meeting, but don't know if that's still going to happen, whether the bridge is going to open, and the mayor's gonna drive over that bridge on Wednesday, as previously announced. Doesn't look like there's much activity. So if we can get an actual update, I know we've moved the goalposts four times with this bridge, and people are asking, when is it gonna be open? So if we can get a real, honest update that is factual, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
So, moving on to, let's see, all right, that's all the public participation. So we'll move on to Agenda Item F, Appointments, we have none. And then Agenda Item G, the Consent Agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 13th, 2023. Number two, counts payable and payroll through November 27th, 2023, in the amount of $3,573,343.98. Number three, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, October 2023. Number four, DeKalb Police Pension Fund Municipal Compliance Report for the fiscal year ended 2022. And number five, DeKalb Fire Pension Fund Municipal Compliance Report of the, for the fiscal year ended 2022. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Zasada.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
A.D.
The consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item H, Public Hearings. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, what time is it? At 6:04. This is a public hearing regarding FY 2024 city budget. I believe Mark Charvat would like to speak.
As this is a public hearing, I'm gonna go into some detail regarding the budget, regarding revenue and expenses. Obviously, the two major components that are outlined partially in the background material up for discussion. Let's start with revenue, one of my favorite discussion points here. I'm gonna begin my comments by saying something I've probably never spoken at this lectern before. Mayor Barnes' comments at the start of the last Joint Finance Advisory Committee City Council meeting made sense. He was right to point out the massive tax burden that will be placed on homeowners and businesses if the school district goes ahead with its plans to increase taxes to the tune of $1,000 for each home valued at about $300,000. He was also right to point out that this increase was out of line and would harm many in this community. Thirdly, he was right to point out that members of this community should contact their school board members to voice concern, or better yet, show up at the next school board meeting, which is scheduled on Thursday this week. The mayor pointed out correctly that the school district is proposing an $8 million increase to the tune of $62 million to $70 million, a 13% increase in the District 428 levy. The mayor said this was an issue, that we hold our elected officials accountable to, you know, I agree. You do need to hold your public officials accountable, especially when it comes to taxes. Elected officials always need to be held accountable when it comes to tax dollars. Now, Mayor, you said, as elected officials quoting now, we all have, you know, financial responsibility to the taxpayer. The community has heard nonstop talking points from our mayor and city officials that have taken part in discussions regarding tax rates and levies with members of other taxing bodies, including the school district. Unfortunately, the public, AKA stakeholders and taxpayers, have not been allowed to be present at these private discussions that you've had, which is truly unfortunate. No public meetings took place, no meeting minutes were published. So in reference to the meetings that you had and city officials had with District 428, I would like the mayor to divulge to the taxpayers and the public right here, right now, what exactly was discussed, and more importantly, resolved and agreed to when you met with District 428 officials. Obviously, this discussion turned sour based on what the school district is proposing. You've led us to believe that progress was being made in trying to keep our property taxes under control, and it looks like the exact opposite will take place, at least as far as School District 428 is concerned. Last week, I was with you to the very end of your statement that you made at the council meeting. You said, quoting now, "With this unprecedented economic development, I cannot imagine any taxing body wanting to take more out of the taxpayer's wallet." I agree with that statement. However, that statement is blatant hypocrisy as far as the City of DeKalb is concerned, and this council is planning to do the exact same thing. Let's look at the numbers. The school district levy will go from $62 million to $70 million, a 12.9% levy increase. The City of DeKalb levy will go from $7.1 million to $8.1 million. That's a 14.1% increase. School District 12-9, City of DeKalb, 14.1. So what's the difference here? Both the school district and the City of DeKalb are equally guilty here of a huge cash grab.
Sir, you can't, you can't lie on that. This is the levy you're talking about.
I'm talking about the overall levy, dollars collected. The City of DeKalb's getting 14% more, and the school district is getting 12.9% more.
That doesn't mean we're not, we're not taking money out of the taxpayer's wallet. We're not.
That, who's, these are taxpayers that are paying this. Where's it coming from? It's not coming from the federal government. From, from our corporate partners, sir. It's also coming from. Your math is flawed. No, it isn't. Your reasoning is flawed. The math is absolutely accurate. And you're well past your three minutes. No, no, three minutes does not apply during public hearings, Scott. What's your point? Okay? Follow the rules. I'm following the rules, okay? Let me use an analogy to illustrate.
We've all read this, we've all seen it, and it's all public information. So try and, try and let us know what you're trying to accomplish here, so we can move on with the meeting. That'd be great.
You know what? I'm getting to my points here.
Thank you.
You can't change the rules of a public hearing, okay? Let me use an analogy. Imagine two individuals who are robbing a liquor store. One individual steals a case of vodka, the other individual walks out with a tall boy. The school district represents the case of vodka, the city represents the tall boy. They both are guilty of stealing. Absolutely. I am sick of this council patting itself on the back when it's taking an extra 14% more in tax dollars and not giving the taxpayers a reduction. Let's look at item number four on your backup right now, okay? Look at item number four. The tax pills for all individuals in the City of DeKalb are not going to go down in the next tax, in the next tax bill we all get. Last year, this council adopted a tax levy which resulted in a reduction of taxes, and I've complimented this council on this before, that the owner, with only a 4% overall increase in its overall tax levy from '21-'22, in 2021, the council adopted a tax levy that resulted in a reduction of taxes paid by the owner of a typical home of $66. That was great news, with only a 5% increase in the overall tax levy from 2020 to 2021. So let's look at this. The city went from an overall tax levy increase of 5% two years ago, and the taxpayers saved $66. See, follow the math here. A 4% levy increase overall, resulting in a $23 deduction. That's in your backup material right in front of you. Now, we go to a 14% tax levy increase overall, and a net zero savings to the taxpayer. It's not going up, it's not going down, but the city's getting 10% more than it did last year, and the taxpayer's seeing a flat zero.
Mr. Charvat, you reduced our rate by almost 10%. So we did not, we could've taken more out of the taxpayer's wallet on their annual tax payment, and we chose not to. We held the taxpayer harmless. The whole goal of the economic development is to bring new revenue sources for the city, but then also reduce the overall tax rate, the overall burden of taxpayers.
The tax rate, the individual tax, when you get your tax bill, Cohen, when you get your tax bill, you look at how many dollars you're paying. You're not looking at tax rates, okay? You're looking to see, did I pay more than last year? Did I pay less than last year?
Please continue.
I'm trying to point out to you that this year, you guys are grabbing so much more mon, a million dollars more, and the taxpayer is getting zero, when you could, you could, you guys have a, I think you guys have a fund balance, you're at 50% reserves now from 25. And then at the last particular meeting you had, the city manager's talking about three pet projects he wants to build. Why not take some of the reserve money and return it to the taxpayers? You can do that if you want. But no, you've made the choice to spend money on other projects. We were promised with all this new development at the south end of town that we would see a reduction. In fact, Mr. Verbic, at his ward meeting, and I think even here at this council, said taxpayers wanna see less taxes. They wanna see their taxes go down, not stay the same. We certainly don't want, I agree with you what you said regarding the school district.
You said it over and over again.
Right. I'm trying to point out to you, you guys could, if you choose to, and you have an item coming up on the agenda where you're gonna have the second reading of the tax burden you're gonna pass, I call the tax burden, you could lower the amount. I know you're not going to, but in fact, there was not one member of this council or Finance Advisory Committee that made one single amendment to the city manager's proposal. Not one individual. So that's it for the tax levy. I wanna talk about the budget next, because that's part of this as well. I was a bit concerned about a couple things that were brought up during the Finance Advisory Committee meeting last week. There is no plan to deal with paying for all the new hires after the ARPA funds run out in 2024. Finance Committee Member Paul Gallian asked this question at last week's meeting. He did not get an answer. Basically, the city manager's response is, "I don't know, we'll deal with that down the road." This is a serious issue that needs to be addressed, and this will be a huge deficit going forward. The city needs to rethink its plan on all this new hiring until this is sorted out. Also, no plans have been announced on how to pay for future pension obligations of all the new hires. The city manager also indicated, as I mentioned, three costly pet projects he wants to pursue in 2024. He did not elaborate. Nobody asked any questions. He'll say, "I'll get back to you sometime in the new year." The public wants to know, how much is this gonna cost? What are they? Are we talking a water tower, a new city hall, a monorail? Who knows? That stuff needs to be answered. But questions need to be asked, and this council is not asking those questions. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment? Hearing none? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:14. All right, moving on to Agenda Item I, Considerations, we have none. And now Agenda Item J, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2023-111, allocating $125,000 from the FY 2024 Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Budget, in support of Opportunity DeKalb's Project Launchpad. Can I have a motion to bring to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there are some people.
Oh, there is public comment. I'm sorry. Yes, I should've called that earlier. We have, first, I would love to call up Mr. Glenn Robey. You wanna kick us off there, Mr. Robey?
Thank you.
You betcha. And just as a reminder, three minutes. Unlike public hearings, public comment has a three-minute time window.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to thank the city council, the mayor, the citizens of DeKalb that are in attendance, the Opportunity DeKalb Board members here, and our working group members. Thank you all for being in attendance. Glenn Robey, President of Opportunity DeKalb, here to speak today on the CDVG Proposal Item J. And lending my full support to this. Why are we here? There's been tremendous work that Opportunity DeKalb and its partnership with the city and other community civic people to bring about a change since 2018, primarily in the Antiglade North neighborhood. There's been a lot of community engagement throughout this time, impacting not only AGN, but DeKalb as a whole. The financial support of this grant, or this CDVG grant to Opportunity DeKalb and our application process will have the tremendous impact of doubling the monies that we're trying to raise if we are approved with the grant through Project Launchpad. Recently, well, earlier this year, we had the opportunity to visit Hammond Development Corporation and see what an impact when you have a nonprofit CDC working to improve the lives of citizens of that community. We saw the job training, we saw people launching an entrepreneurial spirit in developing food service businesses, the support and training that was given by that support or something like this can really do to change the trajectory of DeKalb and truly put us on the map. One of the things that the Hammond Development Corporation did not have was true partnership with the city in a more meaningful way. We have that in place. We've got a very diverse board of directors that are, that come from all parts of the City of DeKalb. We've got a working group with tremendous talented individuals, and some of them will speak today. We are truly a part of making an impact, and this funds will change the trajectory of DeKalb. I promise you, it will do that. I wanna thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Robey. Mayor Smith, would you like to come up?
Jerry Smith, a 63-year member of the City of DeKalb, or a resident of the City of DeKalb, Joe Citizen tonight. As you may recall, it was during my first year in office as mayor in 2017 that I named a 30-member task force to address many issues in the northwest quadrant of our community. From it, the Antiglade North Revitalization Plan was formed. Over the six years since then, we've witnessed an amazing transformation of that neighborhood. It's taken a lot of work by a lot of people to achieve significant progress. More needs to be done. Recently, I was asked to join a few others, some of whom are here tonight, to advise the Opportunity DeKalb Board in helping to refine the vision of the AGN neighborhood, given the changing demography up there, given the Hillcrest Black Hawk space change, and the recent acquisition of land just north of there by the DeKalb County Community Gardens. You know, one of our first tasks was to, what, was to respond to what appears to be a remarkable opportunity, Glenn alluded to it, to work along with state and regional and other local partners in pursuing this sizable grant aimed at furthering economic development in the Antiglade North area. City Manager Nicholas has outlined what we feel is the city's opportunity to leverage a share of local financial resources as a match to this State of Illinois program. I feel so good about the accomplishments that we've made in this neighborhood, and commend the many folks who have helped the City of DeKalb in truly revitalizing many of the sites that we were concerned about back in 2017. The proposal before you, outlined by Bill Nicholas, will continue that momentum, and I heartily encourage you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. And then I have Chad Glover.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thanks for having me tonight. First of all, I wanna start by an expression of gratitude. First, to the mayor, the council, city staff, for your leadership in pursuing the goals of the Antiglade North Revitalization Plan. As former Mayor Smith just mentioned, a lot of progress has been made. We have a lot of work left to do, and we hope that what's before you tonight is part of the work that's ahead. I also wanna thank the many organizations, individuals, units of government, churches, businesses, and others that are part of the coalition that's supporting the agenda item before you tonight. That list grows by the day. Most of all, I wanna thank the residents of the City of DeKalb, most specifically those who live in the Antiglade North neighborhood, who our organization and I have had the honor to get to know and build relationships with over the last six years. Their talents, gifts, and grit are the inspiration and motivation for what is before you tonight. I've shared some information with you to complement City Manager Nicholas's background, and I'm here to answer any questions that I can that you might have tonight. But just for the members of the public, a little bit of overview, what is Project Launchpad about? Project Launchpad is about economic empowerment, which we define as entrepreneurship employment as means for individuals to take their talents, gifts, and grit, and improve their own lives and the lives of their families, the AGN neighborhood, and the broader DeKalb community. How are we proposing to do that? First, work to better connect DeKalb residents to components of the existing entrepreneurship and workforce development ecosystems. Specifically on the workforce side, this means connecting more people to the resources available through the DeKalb Workforce Development Office and the township's Workforce Readiness Services with local nonprofit passion pursuit, to gain the skills, knowledge, and connectivity to jobs available in the local economy. On the entrepreneurship side, it's about connecting more current and aspiring entrepreneurs to existing resources available through the regional small business development centers, SCORE, and more, more local service offerings like those of Kishawaki College and Northern Illinois University, to help those entrepreneurs start and succeed with small businesses in our community. It's also about connecting them to important and vibrant business networks, like those represented by the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce and the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation. It's also about the launch of a partnership with perhaps the most prestigious national organization focused on inclusive entrepreneurship in the United States and Rising Tide Capital. We have an opportunity to become only the 18th community in the country to partner with Rising Tide to bring their proven community business academy to DeKalb and make available for residents here in our community. Finally, over time, we should expect to see outcomes at three levels with metrics to substantiate that impact. First, on the individual family level, additional business revenue corresponding increase in household income and reduction in reliance on public assistance. It's about holistic community economic development. By pairing the historic corporate investment in DeKalb with an even more dynamic entrepreneurial ecosystem and small business base rooted in our shared goals of belonging and inclusion. Thank you again for your time, leadership, and consideration of this agenda item tonight. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thanks, Chad. If you wanna just stay up, and City Manager, I think you wanna?
Yeah, I'll, uh, thank you, Chad, for that introduction. And Glenn and Jerry have also filled in some pieces. I'll, I'll try to figure out where the holes are still, and we'll talk about this. I, maybe I'll just focus on what's being asked of the city, and then we can have some general discussion. So when Chad first approached me, and he admitted, boy, I wish I could, this is something we could've talked about for months, but an opportunity arose to basically double any kind of local contribution that could be made to the, what has been outlined tonight in the way of a plan of work. And that was a $250,000 DCEO grant. It's, it's $250,000. And to qualify, you have to have $250,000 at the local level, and a combination, I think it's 50/50 of actual cash in hand, and then in-kind support. And that in-kind support can come in a lot of different ways. Free rent for a while, or, you know, assistance from persons who have skills that would like to share their, their skills in some kind of educational teaching way, and so forth. So without going in too deep on that, Chad is a subject matter expert, not I. We talked around what the city might be able to do. I was aware from the beginning that there are other agencies and entities that have been approached, and there still are some that are considering this. It's a tight timeframe, and wish that we had known about the grant before. But as Chad and, and members of the Opportunity DeKalb Board have been working with the other entities, I'm trying to think, and as I've explained in my background, what we could do to offer some assistance. Mortensen has already come in with some cash, $25,000. General contractor working with Meta on their large project. I looked at what might be appropriate and what's already designated in our budget to deal with the underserved, and one of those funds is the CDVG fund. And out of that fund, there are some categories that have limits on them, that are set by HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Department of the federal government. We have been working within those limits for many years, decades, actually. We try to do a range of things. We try to do, provide help to human services, and I've underlined this in a couple places. This does not compete with that, what I proposed to you tonight. That, there is a limit to what can be done in that way, and, and we will be going through that in January, as we normally do. It doesn't touch that, that piece. It also doesn't touch the rehab piece, which we've been doing for a lot of years, which includes, I wish I could go further, but within the limits that we have and the money that we get, the two combined, we can help maybe five to 10 families, depending on the range of, of whether it's winterizing a house, helping with roof repairs, helping with upgrading insulation, fixing old windows, and that kind of thing. But we've also been putting money into infrastructure. And in the HUD nomenclature, it's, it's considered public facilities. That's very broad. It can be sidewalks, it can be asphalt, anything within the public way, within census tracts that are qualified under HUD rules. So there's a certain income level and so forth. AGN, as we've talked about any number of times, fits those criteria. So looked at that, talked to our city engineer. In, in recent years, we've used that money, I think constructively. We've done the, the reconfiguration of Kimberley and Edgbok, repaved Greenbrier last summer, also did repaving and some, some softening, some pedestrian-friendly softening of the intersection at Normal, or, excuse me, Ridge and Black Hawk, and so forth. Well, we don't have a project up on the board, if you will, for this year. By what I've proposed, we'd still have some money, about $100,000, if you wanted to spend it on some upgrades, fixing some sidewalks and things like that in the Antiglade North area. But you could also help incentivize and seed what Chad and the Opportunity DeKalb Board have been proposing here tonight. So I've recommended it. I, we've, we've talked about a lot of things. And one of, one, one of the initiatives and functions that the, the Opportunity DeKalb Board has served over a lot of years is kind of, for lack of a better phrase, an ombuds role, a clearinghouse for information for persons who have, they've connected with and connected with them about, where can you go to get this service, or how do you deal with this city government office, and where do I, what do I do, where do I go, that kind of a thing. Well, there's a little bit of that here, and using the strengths that have been developed over time and familiarity, which has been built with residents and businesses within Antiglade North, I think this blends pretty well. It also is, is specific with respect to the virtual 12-week study course that could be afforded to persons who are already, they may not think of themselves as entrepreneurs, but they're trying, they're taking their own initiative with a little bit of very meager means to try to do some things. own initiative with a little bit of very meager means to try to do some things that are different and will advance their economic stability and that of their family. Could be anything from childcare to working with youth in the area and so forth. So there are some kernels here that have come together, and I thought, as I heard Chad make the presentation to me a couple, just a couple weeks ago, that it had promise. I've written it up. I've recommended it to you in behalf of our staff. We're coming forward for your consideration tonight. I've also had a conversation with Chad. Whatever happens with the grant, let's say it doesn't get issued, I think this is an investment we want to make. It's a one-time investment. We're not being asked to do this every year. You're not, are you? That would be new. Okay. But I think it's a worthy investment for the fund from which the money would be taken, and also for the community and for the neighborhood in particular.
Counsel, questions, comments? Alderwoman, Mrs. Zada.
I'm thrilled about this opportunity. We've spoken about this at length in the past. Just hearing about this opportunity for Opportunity DeKalb, and I think that if we can make this happen for them, it's going to be a snowball effect that'll positively transform this community. So thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Alderman Walker.
Hey, I just want to say, you know, I commend you guys, Glenn Rogby, Mayor Smith. You know, a lot of people like to act like they want to help the AGN area, you know, when it's, you know, time to vote, you know, things of that nature. But you guys, you know, I've known Glenn for a while. He's been on the front lines for a long time, and I don't trust a lot of people. I don't trust a lot of people in this room, but I trust that man right there. And for him, for him to team up with you, you know, that tells me a lot about you. So thank you very much for just caring about that part of town, because that part of town, you know, gets, for some reason, it gets, you know, neglected from certain people. But some people look at, you know, those people as being bad people, but I don't, you know. I know we have a lot of crime and a lot of hoodlums in that area, you know. I'm sure we all want them out. And I think the things that you guys are trying to implement will kind of push the people we don't need in the town out and start bringing some people who we need in the town in. So I just want to say I commend you for getting off your ass and actually, you know, putting up a fight and doing things that need to be done. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Alderman Perkins.
I'd just like to commend the collaboration and the creativity to find some money to get this done, because I think it's a great seeding opportunity for an area where we really need it. So good job, guys.
Alderwoman Larson.
I think we've tried very hard from the council to get AGN stabilized so that growth can truly happen. And I think some of the first steps we've taken to get it to be a safer place to live, but now this kind of a project and a program... I mean, so many of these people have not had the opportunities. They're hardworking, they're smart. They just didn't get the opportunities. And this kind of a program is exactly the step up that they need, because just throwing money isn't it. You have to come up with a program that this money funds, and that's what I'm so excited about. So I'm all in. This is great.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Well, Chad, I mean, you've been with Opportunity DeKalb for quite a while now, and I know you and I've had some incredibly long conversations. You know, I've always appreciated how willing you've been to educate and inform, but the way you've championed that neighborhood and Opportunity DeKalb is... Well, it's just incredible, man. You've been able to surround yourself with a great board who also have been huge advocates in that area as well. And I just wanted to say thanks, because I know you did a lot of this, like, on your own, on the side, with no compensation. I think you did it out of just the kindness of your heart, and your heart's huge. So we need more people like you in the world. I'm just really glad to have someone like you here in DeKalb and someone like you driving this particular initiative. So wonderful work, sir. I personally am excited about us being a partner in this, in the form of providing some resources at the perfect time for the perfect opportunity. So thank you so much, Chad.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Hearing no other comments or questions, how about roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
So with that, Resolution 2023-111 passes. Great job, Opportunity DeKalb. Really looking forward to seeing the impact of this. So this is a hell of a thing. Good job. All right. Moving on, and again, you all don't have to stay. You're more than welcome to leave. We will not take offense to that. Moving on to agenda item J2, Resolution 2023-112, authorizing agreements for insurance coverage effective December 1st, 2023 through December 1st, 2024 in the amount of $780,978. Can I get a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbit, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Believe it or not, we need liability coverage, and we also need workers' comp coverage. And thanks to Pat Fagan and Crum Holstead, in the last couple of years, we've been able to look at the market and see what might work, not only to our advantage in terms of the benefit we need and the protection we need, but also in terms of price. So we do an annual contract this year, as we did last year, sorry. And this covers not only workers' comp, cyber liability, crime and law enforcement liability, as well as property, automobile, and so forth, general liability. And the package that's before you has been bumped around a little bit, changes in the marketplace that have added to our costs this year. I've identified those on page 17 of your background, and happy to answer any questions on that. The overall price for the package this year is $780,978. Recommend your approval. There is money in the FY '24 budget for this.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2023-112 passes. Now, agenda item 3, Resolution 2023-113, amending Resolution 2023-038 to increase the combined project total for the architectural, engineering, planning, and special services and design phase services for Project DKB 4924 for the removal and replacement of a portion of the aircraft parking apron at the DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport to an amount not to exceed $58,827.60. This is 650-00-00-83900 Crawford Murphy and Tilly Incorporated. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Walker. City manager.
Hi, Mayor. We have got a couple here in a row that have to do, sort of doing a cleanup, the distance between the actual bid price and an estimate based on the best knowledge that we had available to us has to be tidied up, since we're dealing with federal funds in this one. The city, as you know, has a tip plan for the, not only for certain parts of our street infrastructure, but also for the airport, because we rely on federal money and some state assistance to get some of these bigger projects done. In this case, it was an aircraft parking apron at our airport that was in question. For a number of years, we had $47,000 on the budget. We went to bid, and the bid was $58,827.60. Higher. So we've got to respond by saying that you give your authority to pay the higher amount, and I recommend that we do that.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
resolution 2023-113 passes.
Number 4, Resolution 2023-114, amending Resolution 2023-074 to increase the combined project total for maintenance inspection and repair to well number 16 and well number 17 to an amount not to exceed $165,495.50, Lane Christiansen Company. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
Some moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of you will remember, but it was back in mid-July that we presented the dilemma that we had with wells 16 and 17. They're been repaired, they're back online. Our best guess, working with a consulting engineer, was that what we could see, and obviously, these are deep wells, both of them, we can put a microscope down there and see what might be happening 3, 5, 700 feet down, but based on experience and what our consulting engineer had told us, we thought that the project price removing the motors and the column piping to check out deficiencies would be about $140,000. When all was said and done, it came to $165,495.50, and we recommend payment of that overage.
Counsel, questions, comments? Yes, Alderman Perkins.
I just have one. So this was the one where we had to buy two new motors, right? And there was a rebuild option in there? Does it make sense to rebuild one of them and throw it on a shelf?
And keep one on a shelf. Do you want to address that? Go up to the...
I know they're not cheap, but it's not just a $50 decision, but I think there's also...
I think I know what he's going to say, but I'd rather that he said.
Potentially a lead time question. There's a potential lead time question if it goes out again, you know?
Yeah. And I could definitely look into that. I didn't ask for that option at the time. We're just looking to get the two wells back in service as soon as possible due to the issue with well number seven, which we also have, so... But I can ask about refurbishing one of those wells and/or motors to see if we can do that.
I don't know if it's too late, because I know there was a credit in there that they were giving us for the motors, because I'm guessing they're probably going to do the same thing, you know, but they're going to...
It's worth the ask. It's worth the ask, I think.
So, okay.
Yeah. We've, in the past, we've had, say, parts on the shelf, basically. Sometimes they're exactly what's needed, sometimes they're not. Sometimes the motor design has changed a little bit, and now we bought a part that we'll never use. So I trust Brian in making those judgments, but typically, we do that. In this case, we wanted to get them run because they were so critical to keeping a certain level of pumpage going. So your point is well taken, and we'll look at that.
Great. Thanks.
Alderman Smith.
I guess I'll just ask a question. What was the difference in price, Brian, that caused the increase? Was there something unexpected that caused the price increase?
The unexpected was both motors needing as much work as what they needed. We're hoping, as usually is the case, that we pull the well. Usually, the motor's fine. The pumps usually need to be rehabbed and that, because they get worn. So they either need to purchase a new pump or at least rehab the old pumps. In this case, both motors were more or less shot, so they needed extensive repairs. So they could be rebuilt, but you're essentially gutting the entire motor, rebuilding it, or the purchase of a new motor. And that's what brought us above the estimated cost.
So just like everything else, our cost prices are going up considerably from day to day. I mean, I experience that every day, so I'm...
Yeah. And I will say, these motors are getting expensive. I mean, they're shockingly more expensive than what they used to be in the past.
Thanks, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2023-114 passes. Number 5, Resolution 2023-115, appropriating motor fuel tax MFT funds in the amount of $1,751,000 for maintaining various streets and highways under the applicable provisions of the Illinois Highway Code, Section 23-50s-20s-GM, from January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This, I think, speaks for itself. Every year, we have to do this. We send it downstate, and usually, at the end of the year, we have to come back, as we've just done tonight, and change the actual amount to match up with bid prices and actual costs. So this is what we have in the budget now. There's also money in there to complete both of the bridge projects, and that has, over the last couple of years, taken up a large amount of the state motor fuel tax money that's come into the system, our system of budgeting. We also have a local motor fuel tax, which we throw into the street maintenance and/or the resurfacing. And I've noted that here, we've got $600,000 that's just plugged there right now for helping with the overall... We don't know where we're going to be with pricing and so forth. Every year, the city engineer tries to stretch those dollars. If we get very competitive bids, we'll come back to you, not knowing what the following year's prices are going to be, and we try to do a little bit more. We'll probably do that again this year, but for now, all we're doing is saying, we're throwing a dart out there, and it's probably, safely, is going to be at least $1,751,000. And it goes on a stack somewhere downstate, and then they compare it against the actual costs in the fall next year.
Questions or comments, counsel? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbit?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2023-115 passes. Moving on to agenda item K, number 1, Ordinance 2023-052, authorizing the 2023 levy and 2024 collection of taxes in and for the corporate and municipal purposes and special service areas of the city of DeKalb for fiscal year 2024. We do have public participation. Mr. Charvot?
I'll make a poll under 30 minutes. Scott, it's so convenient you take a bathroom break right now. Appreciate it. Okay. 2021, 5% increase in the overall tax levy. Taxpayers saved $66. Good job, counsel. 2022, 4% overall levy increase, $23 reduction in everybody's taxes. Good job, counsel. 2023, this year, 14% levy increase, net zero savings to the taxpayer. Taxpayers, when they get their bills in the spring, are going to be in for sticker shock. The mayor was mentioning this just last week. It's going against everything he talked about, and the city is contributing. It could help out. Right now, the county's announced an additional 3% in dollars paid to city of DeKalb residents. That'll happen. Of course, we talked about the school district, and I'm going to wind this up with a quote that Mayor Barnes made at the meeting last week. He ended up his statement at the beginning of the meeting, which I haven't read yet. Why are we bringing in all this economic development? What's the point if government is just going to consume it? This is not fair to the taxpayer. That is not fair to all the property owners in the city of DeKalb. The city of DeKalb, by not giving any of this additional 10% levy tax revenue back to the taxpayer, is doing just what the mayor said. The city is consuming that when they could be giving some of it back. You guys did it the past few years. This year, you have a huge windfall, and the taxpayers are getting a zero. I'm glad we're not getting an increase, but we're getting a zero. You guys could amend this and make a change, but you're choosing not to. So I don't know if anybody here is going to be brave enough to perhaps put this off for further discussion to see what we can do for the taxpayer. Because when you get your tax bills, I'm sure you'll all be getting emails in April saying, what the heck happened? Of course, most of the blame will be on the district, most likely, school district,
of these charges. So we've talked about this every year, and we're gonna continue to talk about it, because it's, it's the process by which the levy gets translated into a rate, which touches on every taxpayer. It's what, when you go to the mailbox in the spring, and you rip open that envelope to see whether your tax have gone up, it's the rate against your home's EAV or business that is most important. So, yes, we, this year, we are proposing a levy which will result in, in a very significant reduction in the rate, nine point one-five percent. And so far, I, I'm, I'm not sure, we haven't heard the final results from the other taxing bodies, but right now, that's, that's one of the leaders, if not the leader in that. This year, we had an additional challenge, as did every taxing body in, at least our part of the state, and that was a very big equalization factor. Biggest, anybody, I, I don't know, probably the biggest one on record, nine point five-three percent. Everybody's property went up last fall, nine point five-three percent, including vacant property. And some of those are, are being appealed, and we get notices when, when people are appealing that.
So an, an easy math on that. If you had a hundred thousand dollar home, it's now worth one hundred thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars, let's just say.
Yeah.
Which, that's what you get taxed on.
Yes.
That increase.
That's correct. Last year was six point six-three percent, I think, and then down from that. Next year, it'll be something like five or six percent. It's too early to tell, but that's probably what it will be. So what does the city have to be concerned about? Why do we need property tax at all? Maybe we just level that out. We've been using property tax for the last ten years exclusively to pay off a pension debt, which we didn't create, but which is, is a large amount, and it grows every year, because we have a closed amortization system, which means that we have to be totally funded, or actually in this case, it's ninety percent funded, according to state law, as it is now, by two thousand forty. So the closer you get to that, the, the larger the amount is. Unlike, say, a, a house loan, yeah, usually it's a level, level loan, and as you get a little closer, if, if the opportunity is right, and you wanna reduce the rate, because the rates are lower, you can refinance. But you can't refinance this debt. And right now, nine, the, the debt on the fire and police, the state pensions, is, is roughly ninety-seven percent of this year's actual personnel cost in each of those departments. Think about that. So you're gonna pay it some way or another, right? So taxpayers pay property tax. We also locally pay sales tax and so forth. Some way or another, we're obligated. We can't escape that funding responsibility. So that's a huge, everybody's got their reasons for, for charging homeowners a certain level of property tax. That's ours. None of it goes in a general operation. We don't buy trucks with it. We don't pay wages with it. We do pay something that's related to personnel. Of course, that's pensions. That's it. It doesn't cover all of our obligation for this year. We're just paying what the actuary that we hire every year to tell us what our obligation is. We're just paying that amount. So that's the background. And having said all this, does the taxpayer care about that? Not a whit. They wanna know, what's, what am I gonna have to pay? So we were mindful of that, even though out of our control. By the way, how, how do you get a high equalization factor? That's related to the cost of homes and property, not just homes, but properties sold in the last year. And people were complaining, if you're buying a house at the high pop in the prices, people who are selling houses are saying, holy mackerel, we just got, you know, we were gonna ask this, and we're getting twenty-five thousand more than that. My man, that's, so that was the inflation. The inflation was up around ten percent this time last year. That is the albatross around us as local taxing bodies here in northern Illinois in two thousand twenty-three. So what does that add, that add up to? What, why, why is that affecting ours? Well, we, we have to pay what's obligated of us to the state pension funds. Now, we could pay that out of sales tax, and by the way, we are an additional one point three million, because we chose not to raise our property tax to cover all of that cost. It's just the minimum of what we're obligated to do by state statute. But we still could not charge that. We could just say, we're gonna take it out of utility tax. We can add another local tax. This council has never been eager to raise any taxes, and so, sales taxes and use taxes and so forth. So what, how do we pay for that state? All right. So what we did this year is we aimed for, as best we can, guessing that there will be a certain amount of appeals of the, of the assessed valuations, and we'll, we'll lose something in the bottom line, the, the denominator of the great equation, the community's EAV. But there's a limit to that, because everybody had to pay an additional amount. It's hard to have an, an excuse. Now, if you add something to your house, okay, you're paying a little bit more, you wanna quibble about that, but everybody had to pay almost ten percent more. So our rate will go down nine point one-five percent. It hasn't been this low in nine years. I believe it's nine years. The, and, you know, we, we, we could reduce it a little bit more, sure, we can do that, and we've done it in, in years past, but not that it's gonna make much of a difference unless we reduce it by so much that you're, we're just gonna take more out of the fund that, the general fund that provides for the general services. And at some point, the revenues have to offset the expenditures, and I might come back to you in a couple of years from now, if we keep doing that, saying, we're gonna have to raise taxes somewhere. It won't be property tax, but we're gonna have to raise taxes somewhere. There's a balancing act here this year, as there is every year. This is the middle ground. It's the best ground, I think, for our property taxpayers. No increase in property tax, no increase in sales and use taxes. Services maintained and expanded, actually, particularly in, in the way of police and fire protection. Economic development moving steadily as it has in the last year. So I, I think this is the best package we could come up with. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel. Alderman Perkins.
Just like to take this opportunity, since this Pandora's box is open again, to beat the, the pension liability issue, that people can contact their state representative to get something done about it. Because until we do something about it, it's a, it's a pending sleeping giant out there. And could we take the rate down further? Yeah, but we've got no indication from downstate that any of that is going to change. So you're kind of playing with a bit of fire with that.
Yeah, and over ninety million dollars owed, not including what we're gonna owe next year. So that's past funded, unfunded obligation, right? So it's true, we have a pretty good fund balance, but let's say we took ten million and threw it against that. That's a tenth. A little less, a little less than that.
We've got a lot, a lot of, a lot of pending liabilities hanging out there.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't, it'll reduce our, our one rainy day fund, and then what do we have? We can't go back to the pension board and say, can we have our money back? We ran into a tough spot. It's already gone. It's spent. So we're trying to be prudent and, and conservative, and I think we've achieved that again this year.
Counsel.
I agree. The, you know, the reduction in our tax rate, which, simple terms for me is, you know, you, you got a dollar that you're paying in property taxes. The aggregate tax rate, all the taxing bodies combined, how much do they take? And a number of years ago, two, three years ago, it was eleven point five percent, which would be eleven point five cents. Then it went to eleven point one cents. Then it went to ten point one cents. And what we're continuing to do is, by reducing our rate, we are continuing to take less of a percentage of the overall dollars people are paying in property taxes. What we're doing this year, because of the nine point five-three increase in the value of everyone's home, I think the reduction in our tax rate last year and this year are relatively the same. It's just the gap we had to close, because our house is only appreciated four, six percent last year. Now it's almost a whopping ten percent. We reduced our rate all the way down to make sure that the taxpayer, when they open up their tax bill and look at it, what they pay the city of DeKalb is the same as it was last year. It'd be like expecting going to the grocery store, and what you paid for milk last year, you're gonna pay the same this year? You're gonna pay more. What we said is, no. We're actually just gonna charge you the same amount for milk as we did last year. And I gotta commend city staff for really working the budget, really figuring out how we can make this happen in order to do that, reduce that overall percentage, because we do understand economic development. We do understand the burden on the taxpayer, and we do understand how to attract new businesses. The tax rate is everything. And how cool is it that even though your house is worth ten percent more, you're not gonna pay one more dime in taxes to the city of DeKalb, pending final, all the qualifications? But the projection that we're looking at right now, that's gonna be the case. So I think that's pretty badass, myself.
Also, we, we've been leading, historically, the city of DeKalb represented about, in, in terms of tax bill, about ten percent. Counties about ten percent. We're usually neck and neck. School district, sixty to sixty-five, depends on the year. But by reducing, 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 we're, we're a big part of why it's been going down. And these are not little, you know, percent. These are big, big percentages. Now, where are we today? If you approve this on second reading tonight, and if our best guess of the EAV is, is correct, and given the libraries, library board's decision, which is comparable to ours in terms of rate decrease, and even what we know currently of the school board's view, and, and their number may change, and not, and seeing no change, and we are gonna see change in the other taxing bodies, but seeing no change in any of them, we're down to about nine point six percent, and we'll do better than that. I, I predict that, and I think that's a pretty conservative prediction. So in the last three years, partly because of the, the growth, obviously, but also because of some decisions made right here, you, you've seen to it that the aggregate rate is coming down, so that we're almost on a par with our most competitive cities to the east, and that's been our goal. So if it's only nine percent aggregate-wise, and Geneva-St. Charles will be there, if not this year, certainly next year, and better, probably.
And I have heard from multiple developers now, even though we're not at that competitive tax rate, that trend that we're showing, that year-over-year-over-year reduction, shows them that we are on track to become a competitive tax rate, and their interest now in the city of DeKalb is much higher, because we're proving it at a city government level that we can do this, as well as the other taxing bodies that have been getting on board can do this. So. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, one of the best parts of being an elected official is when someone says, we'll be talking about taxes, we'll be talking about property taxes, and they'll say, my property taxes on my house went down. And they'll say, they'll turn to me and say, thank you. It happens all the time. It's amazing. It's the most amazing feeling in the world. Because when you go into public service, you're trying to do this to, to help people out. You're not just doing it to, you know, feed your own ego, or to make yourself feel special. What you do is, you, you try and help the people. And genuinely helping people by lowering their tax rate has been wildly successful and wildly popular. And we should continue to do that, no matter who holds the seat.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
AI.
Ordinance two zero two-three dash zero-five-two passes. Moving on to number two, ordinance two zero two-three dash zero-five-three, abating taxes levy for corporate purposes of the city of DeKalb for the tax year twenty twenty-four. Can I have a motion, bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Walker, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And for a long time, we have many, many years, abated taxes that could be levied for our debt service, our general obligation debt service, and that's what this particular ordinance is about. We have six outstanding issues. Some are, are coming off in the next couple of years. By two thousand thirty-two, all of the debt, except for the debt we've just taken on, four hundred thousand roughly a year for the fourth fire station, will be gone. Will be one of the least leveraged budgets in northern Illinois, or maybe across the state. And we're proud of that, and, and we don't ask the taxpayer to pay for those payments. We pay for it out of the general revenue that comes in, sales tax, use taxes, utility taxes, and the rest. And so that's what this ordinance is about, and you approved it on first reading only last time. We recommend that you approve it on second reading tonight.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
AI.
Ordinance two zero two-three dash zero-five-three passes on second reading.
Mayor, may I, just one, one little cap to the whole property tax thing. When people get their bills this spring, I'll get a few calls saying, Nicholas, you forgot to levy any taxes. And that's because we have two lines for the city of DeKalb, and most of the taxing bodies do. One is usually general operations, and the other is, it could be debt service, or typically is pensions. So we'll have a big zero levied, basically, for general operations. And the paperwork I'll fill out tomorrow, that then goes to the county clerk's office, will show that all of the revenue we'll get from our levy will go toward pensions. So you'll see, that's where the, the rate is derived, and that's where the, the money is raised for the city of DeKalb.
All right, moving on to agenda item L-one, ordinance two zero two-three dash zero-five-four, adopting the city of DeKalb annual budget and non-bargaining unit pay plan for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Can I have a motion, bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbit, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a, a three hundred-plus-page budget that you have looked at now with the finance advisory committee, and there were just a couple of minor changes that were made. What's posted in your background for tonight, and what's on the website, shows the, the budget as you recommended it forward to this. We, we're still gonna take it on first reading, because people didn't have a chance to look through it. They'll have a chance to look through it all in the next couple of weeks, and we come back on the eleventh of December. We recommend that you approve this on first reading. I'm not gonna go through it all. There were sixteen pages here tonight for people who haven't been at meetings, the three or four meetings that we've had this year, that we have every year for the last six months of the year, to, to make a very transparent budget for people to take a, a crack at. We talked a lot about property taxes tonight. That's only one, and not the largest source of our revenue for general operations, and general operations are, are still a fraction of under forty percent of the overall revenue and expenditures that we authorize every year. We have budgeted revenues across all funds, about over a hundred seventeen million, and spending a little, little over a hundred, or just under a hundred fifteen million. So a couple million in the way of, of comfort in between. So that, I'll answer any questions you may have. We have twenty-nine funds and a substantial fund balance across all of those.
Counsel, questions, comments? Yes, Alderman Perkins.
So, city manager, you mentioned that it's, we're not approving this on second reading tonight, because we want to give the, the public the opportunity to review it, and I would encourage anyone, everyone to go out there and look at it on the website. We, from a process perspective, the FAC and the council, we've all reviewed it, spent a lot of time on it. There's a lot of detail there, and it provides the roadmap of where things are going in twenty twenty-four. So I think, take advantage of the time, go read it, and if you have some input, come visit us next month.
Agreed.
But great work to city staff, I think.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes. Ordinance two zero two-three dash zero-five-four passes on first reading. Number two, ordinance two zero two-three dash zero-five-five, approving an amendment to ordinance two zero one-seven dash zero-one-five, and approval of a special use permit to allow a retail tobacco store at six fifty-piece Road, Bobby Perez. Can I have a motion, bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna thank the petitioners and their council for their patience tonight. What's before you tonight has been explained, and both in the background, by Dan- What's before you tonight has been explained, and both in the background, by Dan Olson, our planning director, and also by the presentation in your background for tonight. The petitioners are requesting approval of an amendment that had prohibited retail tobacco stores at 650 Peace Road. And what the petitioners have in mind is, is sort of a two-tiered thing. On the second floor, they would have the retail tobacco store, Bob's Exotics, is that correct? And selling tobacco products and lawful retail items. And the ground floor has been used for a supply, it's a supply store for, for persons that are legally growing cannabis, and it's got soil and grow lights and humidifiers and so forth. This is permitted already in the light industrial district. There's a little more background here. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on this back on November 20th, just before Thanksgiving, and by unanimous vote, passed it forward to you with their recommendation. Happy to answer any questions. I should note, there are, were a couple of conditions on page twenty-three of your background. There won't be smoking allowed in the tenant space, that's been a longstanding council insistence. Obviously, they have to get a tobacco license from the City of DeKalb. There also has to be a security plan that's got to be approved by the DeKalb Police Department for day-to-day activity in the store.
City Council, any questions, comments? Alderman Walker.
Yeah, if I could ask, how many stores do we have like this in DeKalb?
Five, if I'm right. I think we have five. Five. And they're spaced around town, they're not close to each other. I, that's a good question. I asked about that today, and I got a list, I don't know, maybe I did, no. I don't think I brought it.
We could, if you would, if you can provide additional contacts for the request?
I guess I would like to.
Sure, yeah, do you have a question for them directly?
Yeah, I've got some questions.
Okay, yeah, come on up.
Hi, good evening. My name's Katerina Carrick, counsel for the applicant, Bobby Perez.
Hello.
Hello.
Just want to answer that question, if I may. I think there are other true retail tobacco stores in the City of DeKalb, and this is a little bit of a different situation. Bobby is proposing to sell more of other retail products, not so much tobacco, but glass pipes and other items.
Can I interject?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Katerina. Yeah, so it's very different from many of the tobacco stores that we already have in DeKalb, in that I won't be focusing on tobacco, so I won't sell cigarettes. At most, I may carry vape products for people that come in looking for tobacco, but that's just to encourage them to not consume tobacco.
So you'd rather them vape than do tobacco?
If, if they're, if they're on nicotine, if that's their, you know, their, what they consume, then I would rather them vape than, than use tobacco, yes. That being said, my focal point is more items catered to the consumption of cannabis, just to put it plainly. I believe with, you know, the recent openings of the, or not the recent openings, December 1st, the dispensary is going to open, so all I want to do is operate parallel to that market, which is a rapid-growth industry, and provide education for the consumers in town.
Okay, so let me ask you this. So say I was coming to your shop, and like you just said, and I know, you know, you're not the poster guy for this, but if I were to say, hey, so what's the difference between inhaling tobacco versus inhaling the vape stuff that these kids are doing? What would you be able to say to them?
I would say, I would, I would, I would recommend to not consume either. I would say that I don't carry cigarettes because I don't believe in smoking cigarettes. And, I mean, just to put it bluntly, I, I know that, you know, vapes are, you know, it's honestly something that I have to do more market research on. I may or may not carry them, but if there are people walking into my store asking for that product, I want to cater to those needs at least somewhat.
Yeah, I get it, and I don't mean to, you know, come hard on you, it's just that, you know, I work for UPS, and I drive all around town, and I go to these shops, and I see these kids getting addicted on these vapes and that, and I just feel like we have too many of those stores in this area already. You know, it just makes no sense that we keep, you know, throwing these stores around our area. However, I, I understand it's a business, and it's a business to make money, and if you have to exploit it, it's whatever, it is what it is. I just want to know, like, what's the difference?
Sure.
For your shop? And I'm not trying to be, you know.
No, I appreciate the question.
It's just, I, I just don't understand what's going to be the difference between your store versus smokers' world over on Lincoln Highway.
No, that's a great question.
Because it sounds like it's the same thing, because if you're selling glass, things you can smoke out of, or vape, they do the same thing as well.
Well, the, the difference is that we highlight local glass artists and domestically-made products. You won't walk into my store and see a sales floor filled with showcases, filled with products that are from overseas or what have you. As a matter of fact, my, my first glass purchase as a business owner for that store was an artist called Rastin Glass, which is based out of Sycamore, Illinois. So I really want to build the community around, you know, cannabis consumption as typical as that, maybe I want to make it more normalized, and then highlight local glass blowers and the local community along with that. Does that make sense on how it would be different from?
Yeah, it makes a little bit of sense. I guess, so I guess what you're saying, I mean, this is how I'm looking at it, so you will have special glass to inhale smoke with?
I will have special, I, I will have glass that's not, I'm not, I don't know, it's, it's domestic glass, I don't know, like, how else to put it?
Because how I look at it is, glass is glass, you know?
Yeah.
You put a lighter up to it, and you inhale it, and you get the same effects, whether it's domestic or, you know.
Well, I mean, respectfully, John, I would, I would love for you to come to my store, that way I can educate you on the difference between a domestically-made piece by, you know, like, an artist, and you may not see the value in that, which is exactly why it's art versus, you know, just like a tool. So like, my shop is not just a glass shop, but it's also a place to display works of art.
Yeah, it's just works of art, you know, and I get what you're saying, but at the end of the day, it's just extra, it's just tobacco and vapes, at the end of the day, no matter how we dice it up, and no matter how we chop it up, it's, I mean, I know you're making it sound like it's, you know, extravagant, glass, whatever the case may be, but at the end of the day, it, it is what it is. It's just another, you know, shop for people to get vape and tobacco, that's all it really is. And really how you're, you know, saying it to me is, it's just the same as the other four or five that we have in town. And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to come down on you, it's just that if we always want to complain and cry about kids getting addicted to vapes and tobacco and this and that, then it's like, well, we can't keep saying that, you know, we're against it, but then we keep letting all these stores keep coming, is all I'm saying.
Alderman Walker?
If I may.
Hang on a second, ma'am. You know, we limited video gaming establishments, that was a year and a half ago. And we actually started having that conversation of, do we want to limit the amount of tobacco stores that we have in our community? We could totally have that conversation, like, do we want to limit it? Because I'm, I'm kind of on the, on board with that. Ultimately, it'd be, I think it'd be a good conversation we could all have, if that's something we want to start restricting the number in the future.
Yeah, I get it, it's two different things, I guess, we're getting right on.
Okay. Oh, okay, I didn't know if that's where you were going.
No, no, it is, it is. No, it is, and, and like, I don't want to, you know, hurt no one's dreams about a shop. I don't, I'm not here to do that to anybody. It's just that, I guess I can't keep, you know, being a hypocrite, saying, you know, I don't want people to do this or people to do that, but yes, I'm sitting on city council and I keep voting things in, it just doesn't make sense, it doesn't add up, is all I'm saying. So that's basically what I'm saying.
If, if I may just provide a little bit more clarity, in case it's helpful, from what I understand, this is, it's not a vape shop, it's not going to be filled with tobacco products, and Bobby's very involved in the, in the local cannabis movement industry, and a huge part of what he's doing is educating the public with other cannabis, cannabis businesses opening up in the area. There's a major need for education, and a big part of what he's doing is being involved in the community, educating the public. If somebody comes in, okay, let's talk about the products, what are you consuming, how are you consuming it? Is, what is this, you know, what are the public health concerns? I don't think he's out there trying to harm the public, you know, if you spend a few minutes talking to him about this stuff, he can educate anybody who's not an avid reader on cannabis and, you know, the, the laws related to the, to consumption and all of that. So I think there, he's, this is not a vape shop, it's not a true tobacco store, he needs the license, that's the closest use to what he's proposing to do. But, you know, we, if you look at the products that he will be, it's glass, it's supporting the local artists, it's, he's very much trying to be part of the movement in a very productive, positive way.
Okay.
So.
Alderman McAdams.
So, well, we voted to allow for Grove, Cannabis Grove, here in DeKalb, and I want to talk about that portion of your business, because I think that's the main, it says here that you're doing thirteen-hundred square feet, it's a garden supply store?
Correct, but that is, my business is just upstairs, the Bob's Exotics, which is going to be, it's, it's on record as a retail tobacco store, but I'll be selling primarily just glass pipes and stuff like that.
So he's on the upstairs level, bottom level is the indoor garden?
Sure.
Supply, yeah.
And that's the primary portion of your business, I would assume, right?
No, I don't own the garden supply.
Oh, you're just locating there, okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
I operate alongside the garden supply.
Alderman Larson.
But just from my clarification, just like tobacco, vaping, it all age-prohibited, about how old you have to be, correct?
Correct, twenty-one and older.
So, so no matter where in town, whether it's Walmart sells cigarettes or whatever, you have to follow the rules about being of a certain age to get your, if you sell vaping products or whatever.
Correct.
And so would be checked out by the police very often, sending in a cute young girl to see if they could buy vape from you, so as long as you follow the age rules.
Yeah, as part of, one of the conditions of the proposed amendment to the ordinance is that he enter into an agreement with the city and work with the police department to make sure that he's, everyone's on the same page, you know, he's protecting his business, but also the public interest is protected, the neighbors are protected, and that's something we're assuming, you know, if council approves, we're going to work towards that.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Alderman Walker.
Hey, will you at least sell Doritos?
Yeah, actually, we're planning on.
Sweet barbecue ones.
We're planning on having a fridge, and we're working with cottage food handlers to stock their prepackaged drinks, that way when you come, rather than seeing like a monster or a bottle of water, again, you'll see locally highlighted brands.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
AI.
Ordinance two zero two-three dash zero five-five passes on first reading, I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any comments or questions? Roll call please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
AI.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two-three dash zero five-five. Thank you very much for coming out tonight, you two.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. All right, moving on to agenda item M, Reports and Communications. Counsel, who would like to start? Alderman Verbic?
No report.
All right, Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman, Alderman Larson, sorry, I was thinking what I was going to say.
I just wanted to reiterate my personal thanks to all of the effort that all of the department heads and staff and city manager has put in to get this budget in the books.
Alderman Sisada.
No report.
Alderman Smith.
I didn't, I missed the grand opening to Cal Fresh Market, but I was down there with my wife yesterday. If you get a chance, please go down there. He's put in a lot of time, money, effort. He's partnered with a bakery over at Eleventh and Pleasant, if you want some serious smells, go in there, as I said. But he, he has put his, his life's dream into this project, so please take the time and go over and see it. He does have a Facebook page, he's got a website, he's doing, going to do a fantastic job.
Alderman McAdams.
No report.
Alderman Walker.
I got a chance to talk with Mr. Nicholas, his name, Noah Millard, the fire, what's his title again?
He's a lieutenant in the fire department.
Yeah, got to sit down and talk with him a lot, had a lot of great things to say, and I think we ought to kind of, you know, reach out to him and hear some of the things that, you know, they're looking into, and some of the things that they've done for our community, you know. I was definitely naive on a lot of things that fire, the firefighters have done, and paramedics have done in our area, but to sit down with him, so he can educate me on more than I ever would have thought, was just tremendous, so thank you a lot for that. Let him know, let him know, all right? All right.
For me, tonight, or actually today, Dr. John Powell is in from the University of Berkeley, talking with the Belonging Council, and in fact, they're having a community dinner at the high school, which is over now, that the City of DeKalb sponsored, which was great. And then Dr. John Powell's speaking right now in the auditorium, really focused on this concept of belonging, concept of othering, and the part that I love probably most about is this concept of co-creating a community. I highly recommend, I don't know when we're going to get out of here because of closed session, but if there's enough time, I'd recommend swinging by there. Those in the audience, since you're leaving earlier than us, swing by the high school, listen to what the man has to say, some, some pretty impactful concepts that he has. I also was on the WLWK radio show, TD is, as I say, every month, it's just a phenomenal DJ, and it's great to go on his show and be able to just share what's going on in our community. And then after our last council meeting, I did go to the DARA meeting, that's the DeKalb Area Renters Association, and educated them on what's going on in the community, as well as the whole property tax issue with the DeKalb School District. And I would recommend this Thursday, everyone go to the DeKalb School District Board meeting and express your concerns with the overall rate that they are proposing to the school board. So with that, City Manager.
No report.
All right. So I will go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session in order to discuss workers' compensation as provided for in five ILCS 120 slash two, C12.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sisada, seconded by Alderman Verbic, roll call please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
AI.
They're adjourned to executive session.